Welcome to the May 22nd, 2019 Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in executive session since 6:00 PM to discuss a personnel matter. And if we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can we have introductions, please?
Dave Hurst.
Chris Meyer.
Meredith Mayardi.
Christine Beth.
Jody Monroe.
Michael Cooper.
Holly Dillon-Boss.
Will O'Beir.
Jonathan Fishbein.
And Judy Keighley.
First up is approval of the minutes of the May 8th, 2019 regular Board meeting. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the May 8th, 2019 regular Board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Wow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes.
Chris was really excited about the minutes.
My microphone's really loud. It's like, oh.
Well, you'll continue to be excited because we have another one coming up. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the May 21st, 2019 special Board meeting of the annual budget vote and Board of Education election. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Do we have anyone here from the Student Senate? Okay. And we'll go to the Superintendent's report.
Mr. Cooper. So, the first item I just wanted to bring up was provided on May 10th to the Board. Mr. Petracconi had given the updates about proposed future international trips. And this is just would be the Board's tentative approval that he proceed with advertising this so students can start signing up for them. And when we get the official agenda for the specific trip, you would do a Board action to officially approve those. So, the trips he's asking for your tentative approval for is for 2023 for Spain, an immersion trip with world languages. 2024 would be an art trip, and they're right now considering Barcelona or Puerto Rico. And then 2025 for social studies, they're proposing South Africa. So, if you're all okay with that, then we would give him the okay to advertise it and start finding out how much interest there is. So, does anyone have concerns about those at this time? Okay. I'd like to congratulate Maggie Bailey, who's a ninth grade student in drawing and painting. And her artwork was selected as the winner of the art show for the Festival of Young Artists, which is will be held Sunday, June 2nd at SPAC. It's open to the public, and there's lots of artistic activity, dance, music, artwork. So, if any Board member would like to go up to Saratoga that day, it's supposed to be a fun day, and her artwork will be on display. I'd also like to congratulate our food services, our sales. This year, we surpassed the $1 million mark on May 21st, earlier than last year. And I know Lisa Isner was kind of a little worried because the kitchen is closing soon, and she has limited access for services. So, I'd like to thank them, Food Services Department, for all their efforts in really kind of turning things around in that program. I'd also like to thank the community for the support of the budget. We're very grateful that 80% of our community supported the budget. I'd also like to thank the Board for all the time and effort that you put into the budget development process so that we get this amount of support from the community. We also had the kids vote, too, and the lucky colors appeared to be blue and green. Eagle, Hammagrail, and Glenma all selected blue, and Elsmere and Slingerland liked green. So, those students will get those color wristlets with their school on it for next year. So, lots of competition.
The vote split the Meyer House, just so you know.
Oh, it did?
There was a lot of contention, blue versus orange.
Wow.
It's a little bitter.
Yeah. It was a tough one, six choices. And then finally, I'd like to introduce our afternoon cheer program, who the high school is doing a presentation tonight. And this group of young ladies and gentlemen started an afternoon cheer program to help staff, and they are going to deliver you some refreshments. And Mr. Domel's going to tell you just a little bit about the program. And Ms. Kierdo, oh, sorry, you have a new name. Sorry.
Darling.
Darling. And Ms. Sanders, our CSE Chair, are here as well. And do you young gentlemen want to introduce yourselves to the Board?
Me?
Yes.
I'm okay. My name is Liam Bafamio.
Hi, Liam.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Joey.
Hi, Joey.
Hi, Joey.
Hi.
We're here for the afternoon cheer.
Great.
We're going to match our needs to your name tags so that we can deliver the orders.
Right.
Right. So, can you give the microphone? All right. So, let's do this one.
So, while they're delivering to you, I just want to, I kind of cheated tonight. Too many students and teachers that I like to highlight, so I'm going to highlight a couple here tonight. Ms. Monroe was nice enough to let me budge into the Superintendent's report here. But I would really specifically like to recognize Ms. Why and Mr. Tobias and Ms. Sanders for supporting the creativity of our students, the entrepreneurship, and developing skills that I know that every day, they bring cheer, not just in the afternoon, but all day through the building. So, the culture that they're helping to create in our school, in the high school, is to be commended, and I really appreciate it. So, thank you for letting me share them with you tonight. They're very talented students.
Do you want to mention the paper pastry?
Yes, so we're, can I show you the one? There's a quick little.
Yeah.
Ms. Why, do you want to preset it, or are you good? Do you want?
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want to help me present? Okay. So, Joey will help you present, and we'll deliver. Okay. So, we did make a top 10 about the LEED program, which is our program. It's over here.
Thank you.
So, we made our top 10, but tonight, we're only going to show them the top, the top two. So, the first one that we have for our top two is our.
Paper pastries.
Thank you so much.
Paper pastries.
What do we do there?
We sell cards.
We sell cards. So, we have this video of another student in the LEED program.
Katie.
And she's going to tell us about working a shift at the paper pastries. Are you doing that? Wow. While Ms. Barrett is getting our video up.
And I'm a junior. Welcome.
Joey and I are going to deliver you samples from the.
Hi, I'm Katie. And I'm a junior. Welcome to paper pastries. First, you set up the shelves with cards. Then, I get my name tag. And then, I set up the.
And where are those?
The envelopes.
You even give envelopes to your customers?
Yes.
Awesome.
So, there's an app card clocked in where you, where you sign in your name and the time. And then, after that, I have a chart where I count all the money.
Awesome. So, where's your money box?
Right here.
So, each day, you count the money box?
Yes.
And you add that information into the app?
Yes.
So, Katie, talk to us about taking inventory each day. What does that mean?
That means you show, I, I count these cards.
Okay. So, what do you have there on the top shelf?
Happy birthday cards.
Birthday cards? Okay.
And then, on the second shelf is any time card.
Nice.
And then, we have thank you cards.
Very good. Katie, tell me about some of the holidays or special event cards you've.
Okay, so we've made Mother Day cards, Valentine's Day cards, and we are meet soon we will have Father's Day cards and graduation cards.
Nice. So, do you take special orders?
Yes.
Okay. Fantastic. Can you just talk about how you help customers who stop by?
Okay, so first, I say hello to them. Then, if they're having trouble with what they need to find, I will tell them what cards we have and what they want, and they can choose what they want to buy.
If they want to buy a card, I tell them how much it costs, and then I use iPad. Another app.
Another app. And it helps me how much change they, I give them back.
So, you can figure it out using the app?
Yes.
All right. Well, Katie, you've done a great job explaining to us about paper pastries, and we hope, we hope everybody enjoys the cards.
Goodbye.
That we've sent to them.
And then, the second thing that we have beside paper pastries is.
Afternoon cheer.
Cheer. And we travel with our coffee cart across the street to what school?
High school.
We're at the high school, and then we go to.
Eagle School.
Eagle School. That's right. And Liam, can you tell us what your favorite part about doing the coffee cart is?
Well, I do comic machines, and I do hot chocolate tea and coffee.
Awesome.
Awesome, Liam. You do do a great job with that. And then, you do something very special for each cup of coffee. What do you do on the outside of the coffee cup?
Do the afternoon cheer sleeves.
So, if you look at your coffee sleeves, those have been drawn by Liam freehand. He's a very talented artist. Correct?
Yes. Correct.
He's a very talented artist. The front of the sleeves. What do I just?
Keeping that.
He's talented, eh?
He also made the front of the sleeves.
The front of the sleeves. So, we had a lot of fun. The pictures that are up there are the other students that are not here tonight that have worked on paper pastries and afternoon cheer. And we have 10 all the way down to one of great things that we've done this year with my colleagues Jen Hackett and Paula Device. And we have the link shared with you, so hopefully you'll look through them and enjoy.
Thank you.
So.
Yes. So, on behalf of the Board, we want to thank Liam and Joey for presenting to us today. And this is such a wonderful program. Thank you for bringing us the treats and the cards. And we, in turn, have a little gift for you. And thank you to all the students who work on this and to all the staff members. It's, it's really a great program.
Did Brittany put in a special late request?
She helped me with my baby.
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So, up next is the Board of Education report. On behalf of the Board, we'd like to thank the community again for supporting the budget and the propositions. And congratulations to Mr. Fishbein and Ms. Sampson for winning the Board seats. I'm very happy that there was somebody to take my place, so. And it's always overwhelming to me, the amount of support we get from the community. So, please, thank you to everyone. Does anyone else have anything?
Yep. If I can pull myself together from Joey's mom. So, I saw Nightmare on Kenwood a couple weeks ago at the middle school, which featured, I can't even count how many middle schoolers. So, it was awesome to see, you know, as a kid who was very into theater but really couldn't sing all that well, having other outlets besides the musical is a big deal. And Mr. Riley found a place for just about every middle school student in that show, it seemed like. So, congratulations on that one. Fourth and fifth grade band, recitals, orchestra band, one is one and one is the other, and I can't keep it straight at Hammagrail, but they were both very good, as were the jazz bands last night, middle school and high school, and the high school art show. It's just been like a spring art sensational in the district, and it's something we do very well. We have a lot of very talented students, and it's been really nice to be able to go and see all those this month.
I would second that and add my congratulations to Mr. Riley and all of the cast and crew and helpers of Nightmare on Kenwood. They really upped their game with their special effects this year, and it was, it was, it was a big hit. There is also, if anybody is in town this weekend, they are doing 12th Night here at the high school, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So, if you're looking for some more theatrical things to do.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to congratulate the boys, JV and varsity, tennis teams for going undefeated this season again. And thanks to Coach George and Coach Smith for an awesome season. And today, I went out to the championship matches, or I'm not sure of the exact title, but five of our six players are moving on tomorrow to the quarterfinals. So, that's very exciting as well. And hopefully, we'll have a few go to states.
I just wanted to, once again, thank the community for supporting our budget, but also thank all of the members of our administration and staff who worked really hard yesterday and worked all day. That's a lot of work, and we really appreciate it. And also, the principals who put on the kids' vote, I really appreciate that. I think it's teaching a great lesson to children about civic duty and how important that is, and how fun it is that you can make these important choices for your school. So, I appreciate everyone's work yesterday.
Anyone else? And for committee reports, the Policy Committee met last night before the vote tabulation. Most of our work last night was involved with the code of conduct because that has to be approved by the Board by, towards the end of the year. And then, we've got another meeting scheduled for May, or June.
June 24th.
So, are there any other committee reports? Nope. Okay. All right. Next up is.
Actually, the Facilities Committee met.
Oh.
Sorry.
I was going to jump into.
I forgot for a second.
Two weeks ago, or was it last week?
Last week.
Last week.
And just to kind of touch base, as the bond work is getting started, and to make sure that the Board's going to get the information that it needs in a timely fashion and.
Going along with the facilities, just, we had a meeting with the architects to do the, pick out all of the furniture for the LMC and D122 with the different fabrics. And it's a little overwhelming. It's a lot of different choices, but it was actually really fun to be part of that. So, that was this week.
Do we have a new facility meeting scheduled? We don't?
We were waiting. I think we're going to schedule one and try to schedule a couple in the summer.
Summer.
So, we don't have any right now.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Our presentation this, tonight, is Technology in the High School Classroom, and it will be presented by Principal Dave Doell.
All right. Thank you again, and congratulations on the budget. Thank you for all your efforts on that, and congratulations to the winners for our seats. Tonight, I have a presentation on technology education in the high school. I did not tell my teachers that they were going to have to follow that, so I know you guys are, you're going to do fine, though. They have some awesome stuff, as you can see here in front of you and behind you. If you notice, they have the 3D printer actually going right now, creating. So, when I have to think about what I would like to share with the community about BCHS, it's very difficult. There are so many amazing programs within our building that could highlight the many talented students and staff, many of which already received publicity. Therefore, I try to make a selection based on what might, might not be so evident. Opportunities within our building that may go unnoticed to those that are not directly involved. This year, I decided to highlight our technology education in the building. I am fortunate enough to have here Mr. Kevin Shannon, Mr. Eric Fana, and Ms. Jen Gagne, our Science and Technology Supervisor. We are not only going to share with you a brief overview of the programs, but we'll place emphasis on the recent changes and additions. New tools, teaching areas, machines, and technology that allow our students to take the classroom knowledge and apply it to hands-on application, which, which we feel is very important. Through technology education, we're developing critical thinkers, critical thinkers, problem solvers, creators, innovators, and builders. So, last year, the district administration supported some changes and some new equipment to our power mechanics room, and it's really made a huge improvement. And so, I thank you for the continued support with our technology education. I'm going to hand it over now to Mr. Fana, who's going to start our presentation for tonight.
So, I just wanted to highlight some of the programs that we have here. Our technology and engineering program is kind of split three different ways. We have Project Leadway courses, which is a nationwide STEM curriculum provider. And the courses we have there are Introduction to Engineering Design. We get people to think like an engineer, introduce a lot of problem solving. We did 3D printing competition recently, a couple winners here that got voted on last night. And then, we have Computer Integrated Manufacturing. We talk about mass production. We learn G&amp;M code, which is how the 3D printer kind of operates, along with CNC machine. We also have Civil Engineering and Architecture, where they design homes kind of pretty much from the foundation all the way up to the roof. We have Digital Electronics, where they do Arduino work, so programming, bread boarding. And then, we have Principles of Engineering, which Kevin teaches. They do a lot of trust calculations and really sets them up to be better prepared when they go to school for an engineering degree. Then, we break down into some technical education, kind of more like the industrial arts, you know, the, our kind of Kevin and ours roots when we first took technology in high school, that's the stuff that we kind of fell in love with. And then, we learned everything else, you know, as we, as we continued our path. But woodworking and power mechanics, we still have great enrollment for those. Both of those are offered in half-year sections, so a lot of kids end up taking them. A couple sample projects, I think a couple are on the floor from woodworking. And then, for our power mechanics, they do oil changes, car tune-ups, small engine repair, all sorts of little great projects. And then, I'll let Kevin do the Cisco Academy. He's, that's his special, specialty.
Good evening. Like Mr. Domel said, a lot of what we do is kind of hidden in the building. I've had people come down to our wing and say, "We have an auto shop." I say, "Yeah, yeah, we do." It's kind of cool what we do in there. So, it's, it's very nice that we were invited here today to talk about those things. But two years ago, this is our second year running the Cisco Academy, and I believe, you know, as a community and as a Board, we approved this. And we run two courses. We run the Network Programming 1 and Network Programming 2 courses. This year, we have two Network Programming 1 classes, and this is our first Network Programming 2 class because it followed the cohort from the year previous. That was two Networking 1 courses. So, in that class, they're learning on hands-on types of applications of network administration. So, our industry loves jargon and fancy words and everything else, but basically, they learn how networks and the Internet communicate, how all of this happens behind the scenes, not just sitting at a laptop and clicking on Google Chrome. So, how does that all happen? How do we set that up? And hopefully, preparing them for getting a job in an industry, something similar to what Mr. Nardelli does, or what our IT staff and support staff do here, even in our district. So, constantly, we have a good way to relate back to where this all comes from because we have people right here that do that with us. So, that's, that's a newer course that we started to offer. Like Mr. Domel stated, we've had some new additions in the past couple years. So, this is our second year. The program is still in its infancy here at the school, but enrollment is doing very well. And later on, we'll speak to one of our students who's actually going through that program right now.
Oh, that's me now? I thought you were. Okay. This is me. So, Project Leadway has a couple affiliations with some colleges. They work with WPI and RIT, New Hampshire Institute of Technology, and a bunch of other ones. We work here in New York with RIT, and students can earn three college credits if they score a six on the end of the course assessment that they take coming up here in June. Most of our students do very well and go on to earn credit. I don't know exact numbers, but they do well. And the newest thing that AP and Project Leadway kind of work together, and if you get a kind of culmination of those three, one Project Leadway, one STEM AP, and then one or the other, again, they put kind of a special recognition on your college board application, which is great because we have AP stats here, AP, computer science, biology, and so forth. So, really opens up some opportunities to some students, kind of get a jumpstart on college, you know, whether they end up going to, you know, into a technical trade or not, it's still something that looks good on their resume.
So, back to talking about the Cisco courses again, the, the job readiness idea of the Cisco courses is what really is appealing to a lot of people. We're preparing these students right out of the course to have a career, not just, not just a job, a, a full-time career. And with that, becomes an industry standard certification. So, if they go through the first level of our course, our Network Programming 1, they will be prepared to take what they call the CCENT exam, which is the Cisco Certified Entry Network Level Technician. And that is, like Eric mentioned before, with some of our other courses, a resume booster is one thing, but also a career getter. So, this, this is actually something that they could go out and get a career with. It's the entry level certification, and we have had quite good success in the past, that last cohort that has gone through. We've had, I believe, more than a dozen students take the exam and actually get that certification. This is not a certification that high school students are typically taking. This is something that grown adults are typically taking. So, it's not written for their level. It's written quite above that, which makes it quite challenging for them. But we do our best to prepare them for that, and so far, it's shown that they are. It's been, it's been working. The CCNA is the next level exam. Again, it's still a Cisco certification. This is a certification that demands quite a bit more salary when they do have this type of certification, and it is a little more fine-tuned of a career. It's a little more advanced. So, with this certification, we have our smaller group that has made it now through that Cisco 1 course and on to the Cisco 2 courses. We'll be preparing for that now at the end of this year. So, we don't have really any data yet, but this is an extremely challenging exam to take. I have taken it myself, and I know the challenges that they're going to be expected to complete. The idea behind all this is put them in situations that they're going to run into in the real world, but instead, on paper. So, it's difficult to try to make that transition. And there is quite a time crunch on these exams, so it puts a, puts pressure on them. So, they, they are, they are difficult, trying on them, but I'm confident that they will do well at the end of this year, and we will have data for you as soon as we have it. Oh, now we have a, a little video. So, we have put together a video here that's going to, to showcase some of our projects, our students working, some sample clips, so. Oh, yeah, it'll show our new labs. We've got the renovations in the power mechanics rooms and the wood shop. So, all these things, you'll kind of see here in this video. So, all these things, you'll kind of see here in this video. All right. So, that was kind of just to show you some of the projects that we do inside of our classes, some of our students actually working. I know sometimes, just looking at a clip, you can't tell what they're doing, but in the auto shop there, they were actually building sheet metal toolboxes. That was a project they were working on. You saw a yo-yo that Eric CNC class was working on that was engraved with a computer-controlled device. He mentioned G and M code, so we teach a little programming that actually controls that machine, and all the other projects that all of our students are doing and working hard on every single day. The neat thing is, we're trying to take projects that are traditionally built and incorporate the 21st century technology into them. So, we're starting to see some woodworking products that are now starting to use some newer technologies in them. So, we're using, let's say, a laser engraver on a traditional clock. So, we're laser engraving numbers. So, we have all sorts of really neat equipment that was now put into our toolbox, we'll say, okay? And most of this is found in what we call the Fab Lab. So, our Fab Lab was actually a space made possible by, I believe, donations from Mr. Paul Wing and some others several years ago. And what we've done over the past four, three to four years, is constantly expand with new technology that we could use in every course. We're not just trying to make one course have more technology inside of it. We're trying to broad-spectrum technology that they could all use. So, one example here is the picture on the left. We could see we have a vinyl cutter, which is actually sitting right behind you. It's the blue machine next to Eric. And what that could be used for in that woodworking class is if you wanted to put a decal on something, if you wanted to put numbers on a clock, if you wanted to say "created by" and personalize your item, or if it's a gift, you can make it very personal. And actually, if you look at the coasters that your coffee may have been put on, if you flip it over, you will see a decal that was made on that vinyl cutter. So, this is a tool that is used to take that traditional woodworking project really into the 21st century and make it a little more appealing and teach those students one more skill. So, that is one thing that we're trying to do with this Fab Lab, with this space. Also going is a 3D printer over there. We have various 3D printers in the Fab Lab. I think we have five in that one room. There's others scattered throughout the entire building and all our different tech labs, but the Fab Lab, I think, has five of that size and one large one that we could print some larger-scale things on. So, as for our newer machinery, obviously, we have our old traditional tech, but this is what we really wanted to focus on, was our equipment for the 21st century. Our laser engraver is kind of our new fun toy that we're really trying to play with and use as much as possible. You can see on the front of your coasters, we have our Be The Change, which was designed by Mr. Fung and Mr. Domel together. That logo is actually burned in using a laser. So, the kids will have to make that design, put it on there, and then, we'll use that laser device all the way on the left, and it'll burn it into the wood. So, that is a new item that we're trying to use as much as possible, because it does create a really nice finished product. Next is the CNC milling machine. This machine, Eric was talking about, the G and M code to computer control and cut these different, these items. Somewhere in the video, you saw a Tic Tac Toe board. It had 3D printed Xs and Os', and it was on a board that was nicely laid out. That was done on that machine. So, that machine then engraved, using a drill bit and a cutter head, that made that board for the student. But in order to do that, the student needed to learn how to program that device. So, it wasn't a simple, "Let me just draw a Tic Tac Toe board." They actually needed to know how to use G and M code and CAD software in order to make that possible. Our vinyl cutter I just talked about, that is right behind us, we've used it several times to things around the building. If you notice, when you're in the central foyer, there's a very nice Be The Change with an eagle logo over there. That was done by us earlier on, per Mr. Domel's request. And our 3D printers, we use constantly. We just had our 3D printing competition, and students in the IED classes designed all these different objects you see up here. The challenge was to design a new Monopoly piece, so something you might find in the game Monopoly. So, you see all sorts of things that they found of interest. So, there were two winners. The votes happened during the budget vote yesterday. They voted on these items. One of the winners is the Game of Thrones Castles, number 97 at the top, okay? And the other one is right here, is our shuttle cocker birdie from Badminton Game. So, those two are our winners for this year, and the public voted on that. Props to everyone that competed. There's some really neat designs in there. And again, they use CAD software to design this, and then, our various 3D printers to print the designs. What do we have next? So, in our other classrooms, in our auto shop and our wood shop, we've also seen updates there. A lot of it is around flexible seating, new bench tops, things that were just getting more outdated, kind of beat up, and really needed some changing. Our bench tops with new vices really allow students to produce better products, because now, they're not, you know, putting gouges and scratches in their finished products. It's fantastic. So, our wood shop has really had that done to it. As far as the auto shop goes, you could see in the picture, we have new bench tops there in our seating area, where we do our instruction, but they could take their stools around, and they can sit at different work benches in different areas. Because it's an auto shop, we're constantly doing demos around vehicles. So, it's a flexible seating type of environment. They pull their stools all over the place. And inside that CTE shop, inside that auto shop, we expanded into new welding booths, so it's safer for fume extraction and for eye safety for our students this year. We also added two metalworking lathes to our toolkits this year, so we have two of those, and various things that were made possible this year for us, which was fantastic. We really appreciate everything. And also, a new paint booth in there, and that allows for better fume extraction as well. If you've ever been down into the F Wing while we're spray painting, it can get a little much, so the fume extraction was a big added bonus this year.
So, we have a few sample projects that kids have worked on in our classes. I feel like I'm not even in it. On the left is example from civil engineering and architecture. They have to build a home. They start off building kind of just a model shed, and then, they work into doing a habitat for Himalaya Home, and now, they have worked up to kind of doing what their dream home would be. So, this one, you know, this kid went all out. He's got, you know, four floors there, open concept. They talk about, you know, different kind of passive lighting, solar options, a bunch of different things. And also, in CEA on the right is the framing. So, we teach them how to do kind of traditional framing using small models, you know, all the way from floor joists, rafters, and they put those together and label those off. And then, in the middle is from woodworking. This student did a great job this year making this table. It's one of the better projects that I've seen come out of the wood shop. I was ecstatic to see it come out, just because from the student, I just didn't expect it. We have students come in that, you know, aren't necessarily the highest SAT scores or the highest on the Regents, and then, they come to our class, and we really get to see, you know, them shine, their efforts shine, their creativity shine, and it's really just amazing to see. Makes my job, you know, fun and easy, so... Couple more projects. Kevin was talking about the CNC machine up on the top left. Cut that out for Tic Tac Toe. We had a couple students do Mancala on boards as well. And again, that's all drawn up. We use kind of industry-leading technology. Autodesk Revit is what we use to draw that all up on the computer first and then, send it over. So, instead of a kid standing in front of a drill press, like many of you maybe had to do when you were in middle school, even I had to do that, this is now just an automated process. The kid puts in the block, and it kind of cuts out the pattern. They've already done all the hard end of the work on the computer. Up there also is the toolbox, along with the car. Both of those are in power mechanics. The toolbox is a lot of sheet metal fabrication. Again, thanks to the spray booth, we're able to kind of spray paint those a lot better. We used to have to go outside and do it. Now, we can do it right inside and have much better fume kind of mitigation there. And then, we have some digital electronics projects in the middle. One is using sensors and kind of different servos and motors, teaching them how to program, again, using a C++-based language. And then, up on the top is the toll booth that they're working on right now. We started off making that with a programmable logic device that they used, computer software again, to program that, and now, we're using an Arduino to program that. So, they kind of get to see full spectrum of, during, in our electronics course. We start them very simple, just making basic circuits, and then, we go all the way up to programming using microcontrollers and processors. Kevin's class does the trusses. I spoke about that earlier a little bit. Not only do they just build the trusses, but they have to do calculations. I'm sure Abby will talk maybe a little bit about that one in her experience with that. Couple of our 3D printing, our chessboards, and then, the, I guess, a doll chair, or a doll. But those two projects came out really good this year as well. Do you want to fire off the vinyl cutter? The vinyl cutter's pretty cool. We got this last year. We played around with it at the beginning of the year and kind of really perfected it. We bought bottles this year and gave all of our IED students kind of aluminum bottle, and they made a design, and then, we etched it with a sandblaster.
So, what's actually happening here is there's a little, a picture, an X-acto knife on two axes, moving back and forth, and we have our vinyl going in and out of the machine, and it's cutting out, Eric, if you could hold it up there, it's actually cutting out a giant eagle head, okay? We did this smaller scale, like Eric said, with the IED kids, and put it on almost like an Algen-type of aluminum bottle, and they were able to sandblast it and use it as almost like a mask. So, when they peel that off, then, it's etched permanently into the bottle. And it was kind of a take-home. It was a fun little thing for them to do, and they designed their graphic using CAD, using industry-standard software that a engineer would use. Everybody always loves the sounds it makes. So, this is the same way that we cut out that Be The Change logo that we found at the front of the, in the front foyer. We've also done different signs around the building for the supervisor's office, for a couple different rooms that were missing, the black signs with the white lettering and numbers that you see all around the school. We were able to match that with this machine and put signs up for them, so... Oh, also, yeah, yeah. Mr. Domel just reminded me, we did a, we partnered with Detective Whiteley. He was doing the walk-in bike-to-school day, and he needed a banner. So, he contacted us and said, "Hey, can you cut a banner for us on your vinyl cutter?" So, you actually saw a picture of it. You probably saw it was a blue tent with a nice banner, all sorts of colors in front of it. That was something that we made right on this machine. So, we're trying to help and utilize our equipment for the community, for the district, for our schools. Because we have it, we might as well. It gets the kids' experience, real experience, saying, "Hey, can you manufacture this product for me?" And instead of saying, "I don't know," they say, "I'll try." And then, they go and they design it and see if they could actually implement it. We've had success, we've had failure, we run with it all. So, the process Eric's doing now is called weeding. Obviously, we would be doing this on a workbench, a little nicer, so it's not sticking all over to itself. But then, you would take this, and literally, you made a giant sticker. Stick it wherever you like, whatever you like. And we all see products like this all around. You actually have one kind of sitting right in front of each of you. You have your boards. You also have this Bethlehem Central banner. All these things are things we can make, and you have your coaster with our sticker on the back. So, all of these products that we are now opening ourselves up to, that students can manufacture for us, for the district, for the school, for teachers. So, we're kind of, it's a whole new adventure for us that we're kind of opened up to. It's kind of the eagle logo. We usually lose an eye. The eagle usually loses the eye, but it was there. So, Mr. Fana will talk a little bit about the robotics club, then, we'll talk a little more about our signs around the school.
So, our robotics club has been working really hard the past two years. We started it last year. A couple students came up to me looking to start kind of a robotics club, and I had past experience with Vex Robotics, and the student at the time was already doing different robotics competitions. So, we went with Vex Robotics competition. Other schools that compete around this area are Gilderlin, Saratoga, Colony, and even Shen. The last year, we did really good. We won a trophy in Queensberry, and then, we won another award up in New York State. I think there was about 100 teams up in New York State, and we landed a judges' award. They made, they had an excellent engineering notebook. It's not just about building the robot or how your results are on the field. It's more than that, and our kids, we saw, they saw excellent teamwork, excellent collaboration, and their engineering notebook was really thoughtful, and they had all the steps listed out of things that they thought. They redesigned the robot, I don't know, probably two weeks before the competition. They came in, and it was just parts, and I pretty much had a heart attack, and then, they pulled it together. The same, we went up to Syracuse. We stayed the night, and then, at around, probably, I don't know, 11:59 that night, we've kind of had something that we were pretty proud of, and they were proud of, so they took it to competition. And they did pretty well, enough to win a judges' award and be recognized by the judges, so I'm proud of them for that. This year was a kind of a struggle for us. This year was a kind of a struggle for us. Vex kind of threw a couple curveballs at us. The competition was a little different this year than last year, along with they changed the platform, and the ordering kind of wasn't the best. They didn't kind of roll out with a good kind of ordering system, I guess. We ordered back in September. We didn't get the stuff until after the competition ended. So we had to go with the old stuff. Some people got their new stuff a little bit earlier than us for whatever reason, but they still came out on top in our last competition. They, again, they got another judges' award, and I'm sure Abby and Emma will talk about that a little bit more. But it's been great two years. Next year, they've already started. We already have the next competition, so we're kind of excited to see where that goes, especially with the new software and the new platform for Vex, so.
And one of our newest things that we're kind of piloting at the moment is our tech business partnership, the Build It Buy It. So everybody's heard of the Buy It, which is our school store. We are attempting to start what we call the Build It. So the Build It is a partnership with the Buy It where we supply them with products. So we're kind of talking about how we're trying to use these cross-platform, all of our new tools and all our new toys. So we've kind of had probably about 15 orders so far, and so far we've gotten them all done on time, so we'll stay with that. And one of them was for the lacrosse team. They wanted t-shirts, so we went, and we have our vinyl cutter, so we might as well use our vinyl cutter to cut the vinyl and heat press on the lacrosse logo that they want. So we teach our kids manufacturing. How do you do that? How to use the different machines here. Eric, hold this up. I can't do it one-handed. Look like a wrinkled mess. But it came out very nice, and in the end, they had their shirts, and they had them for a significantly less price than they paid in previous years because it was made here by us, by students, so we were able to provide that for them. Some other things that we've been doing is our supervisors are getting ready to do their senior awards. So our departments give out their senior awards this time of year. So all the supervisors, we pitched this to the supervisors, of course, and they put orders in. And we were happy at first, and then realized we had two weeks to make all these things, but we pulled it together. And one of the items we were making was a graduation-type of frame that's all laser engraved, and it's customized for the student, so it has their name on it, it has any awards of the department that's giving it. We put different emblems on it for them, all laser engraved. Some of the other things that we've made this year were plaques. We have the black gold, the traditional type of plaque Eric will pass around, or also like an acrylic option. And then we also have some people come to us and say, can you make something that we have no idea how to make? And we try. So they wanted a certificate frame for an eight-and-a-half by 11, just generic certificate. So we were able to come up with something nice, inexpensive, and this one's not stained or treated or anything like that, but in the end, we did stain it and finish it, and it came out very nice-looking. And we were able to provide a service in district for the district, which was very nice. And it's with that, with that partnership with the business department where Ms. Farrell is able to help us as far as the accounting end of things goes, the placing of the orders and supplies that we need, and her students, she has access to the marketing classes who then can pitch these products for us. So it's going to be a much larger collaboration as time goes on, but I would call it, we just piloted it. So it's in its test, its infancy at the moment, but it seems to be working. No major, no major hiccups at the moment. So we did take a couple sport orders so far for different t-shirts and different things like that, but our big one was definitely for the supervisors. So next year, we're hoping to expand, have some options maybe for other schools inside the district. We just don't want to do too much too fast. We got to make sure that we could actually provide what people want, and so far, so good. So we're proud, we're happy with it, of this, and this is all happening down in our wing in the fab lab. So this is good use of space that we, normally at the end of the day, we don't see too many kids. They're with their math teachers, they're with their science teachers, and now we have kids coming back saying, hey, that was really cool. I saw that thing sitting on your desk. How did you make it? And we show them, and then they start producing these products with us and for us, and together it's a joint effort. So that's what we're striving for, and it's definitely growing as of right now. So we're actually going to turn it over to the three ladies we have here with us. We have Abby DiFranco, Emma Edgar, and Caitlin Rabinstein. They're going to talk a little bit about their experiences in the different classes, maybe the clubs that they've taken. So ladies, why don't you come on up?
My name's Abby DiFranco, and so there's so many reasons why students should enroll in the Technology Department, but primarily, the most important two reasons are the problem-solving skills that you learn, as well as the foundations of engineering and technology, knowledge-wise. So, for example, I'm taking the Principles of Engineering class, and we learn not only the foundations of civil engineering, electrical engineering, mechanical engineering, all the way to computer science and code, but also we engage in projects which really allow students to apply what they learn in class, whether it's like trust calculations, which we actually have a computer-animated environment that allows us to test trust designs that can be applied to bridges and civil engineering. And we also, for example, we learn how to use motors and sensors and the electrical part of engineering, and then we can apply that to projects like marble sorting that allows us to sort marbles based on color, size, and weight. In addition, I am part of the robotics program, and we can apply not only what we know in class from the Engineering Department and Technology Department, but also we learned skills, important life skills, such as public speaking and people skills. For example, we speak to the judges at every competition, which allows us to present what we've done and our design process, and we also negotiate with other teams and strategy. So we'll advocate for what our robot can do, and we have to be both assertive and negotiating so that, you know, you can have a good strategy and win the game. And lastly, we reach out to other kids, and for example, we went to an elementary school recently, and we allowed the young elementary students to drive their robots, which was amazing because we got to see the smiles on their faces when they were able to like place a ball, or when two students were fighting against each other. And it really makes you feel good because you're reaching out to the future engineers and encouraging those who will soon come to the high school to pursue engineering classes and try robotics, so.
Hi, I'm Emma Edgar. I'm a sophomore here at Bethlehem, and currently I'm taking Computer Integrated Manufacturing Course, the CIM course, and I really enjoy taking tech courses like this one, like with Mr. Fanna. We've been doing a lot of the stuff that we've been talking about tonight. Two main reasons that I enjoy this is because I have a love for learning. Anything that I can learn, I'm going to grab it, so especially with tech things, I really enjoy that. So I feel like I have a lot of opportunities here that I can take really awesome tech courses. Then there's also a lot of challenges presented to us here. So throughout the courses, there's a lot of challenges and problems that we have to solve with the problem-solving skills that they present with us, then we solve these challenges, and I feel like that really prepares us for other challenges we can have like outside of the classroom. And so this also leads me on to talk to the problems we have in, or challenges we have in robotics. So with Abby, I am part of the robotics team here for the past two years. One key element I find that there is within the club is that the problem-solving skills you have to have. There's often a day, well, you come in to the lab and there will be a new problem that you have to solve, and it's like, all right, so here's our different options. What can we do with this? There have been some times during the competition where we've discovered, hey, the robot's not working. We have a competition in 10 minutes. What are we going to do? So one time during one of our competitions, Abby and Katie and I, she's, Katie is another member of our team, we had five minutes to find what the problem was and fix it so we could get back on the field. So I'm really proud of my teammates for fixing the problem once we found like the wheel was rubbing, so against the chassis, so that wasn't working in it. So from there, they changed out the motor, and that really highlights the problem-solving skills and time management and working under pressure, and I feel like these are qualities that you have to have for going beyond just high school and into college and a professional work environment. Some other specific things that I've learned throughout this robotics program, which I love, are programming and programming techniques that we've had to learn that can control the robot and also during an autonomous period. And that's proven to be very difficult, but still the learning challenge that I get is, I love it, and I know that my teammates do too. Recently, we've been working on figuring out how to work with the new game and the new software, and so that's been fun. So new, the competitions don't start until the winter, however, both of the teams now, we've been working on critical thinking skills for during the competition and robot designs, and, you know, how can we tackle this problem now? I also would like to say thank you for approving our request for academic varsity letters. Thank you for recognizing the work that we put in. There's been many nights when, with Mr. Fanna and Mr. Shannon and the tech department, they've stayed with us until 11 o'clock PM at night. The janitors are kicking us out, and we're, you know, still working on the robots, you know, it's the night before a competition. So I just want to say thank you to all of you for approving that, and also thank you to the tech teachers because it really means a lot on behalf of the whole entire club.
I'm Caitlin Rabinstein. I'm a senior. I took the Network Programming 1 class last year, and I'm currently in the Network Programming 2 class. I'd just like to say I came to the school district in 7th grade, and from what I know about the opportunities at the high school I would have gone to, there are many more opportunities here, and I'm very grateful for the wide variety of things I'm able to do. I feel like these classes are very good examples of that. After taking these classes, I have decided to go into this career field. I'm going into college for network administration, and I'm very excited about that. And I passed the CCNT, no, C, yeah, C-C-N-T, and CC-N-T, and I don't know how to say it, sorry. In October this year, and I'm very grateful to Ms. Gagne for all, everything she did to get that together because we took the test here, and that was lots of troubleshooting. And then the class itself was a new experience for everybody involved. So we learned how to program switches and routers. A lot of the cables we used, we made them ourselves, like not entirely, but the connecting, we configured the, like changed the wires around, organized them, and crimped them, and then they worked, and that was exciting. And then we got to learn how everything connects. This year, we're moving on to wider variety things, like instead of just how local networks connect, we learn how they connect to each other and to bigger things like the internet in general. And it's just a very exciting opportunity that I'm very glad that the students at the school have access to, and I think it's, I'm very glad that we all decided to do this. So thank you.
Just to wrap up here, I just wanted to say thank, they told me tech guys don't like to talk. Girls, hold on one second.
I'll give you eagle pins before you run out.
You want to come up and get those now while I wrap up here? So, but I wanted to publicly thank them so much for all they do for the students. They put in hours upon hours. They're obviously excited about what they do, which rubs off on the students and the building, which is amazing. So thank you, guys. One more example I just wanted to bring up and highlight. Last summer, I wanted to try to do something, we wanted to try to do something, to excite students that are, were coming from the 8th grade that might not necessarily have a connection to the school. And I asked a lot of our elective teachers if they would put some stuff together that would create some excitement and then connections to teachers within our building or staff in our building. And whenever I ask them to do anything, they're always a smile on their face and happy to help, so thank you, guys. And that wraps it up. If you have questions, they obviously be glad to answer, and Ms. Gagne is here as well, if you have any questions for her, so thank you.
Before we get to questions, I was passed a note before. Classrooms aren't the only place where notes get passed. I forgot to mention to the PIG students who are here, your obligation is to stay until 9 o'clock or the end of the meeting, whichever comes first. So when we're, if we go till 9, we'll take a break so you can come and sign out, and when you sign out, you need to not only sign the sheets here, but if you have paperwork that your teacher needs a signature for, you can see any of the board members, okay? Okay, Jonathan?
I don't have a question, but I do have a compliment to pay. In the three years I've sat on the board, and at other times, I've seen a lot of presentations and a lot of students come up and speak to the board. The three young ladies that spoke tonight, I think, are probably the most articulate and well-spoken that I have heard, and I am so impressed with the three of you, and thank you so much for what you do.
Jonathan, I was going to say exactly the same thing. I think it's just, it's incredible, and I'm sitting here and I'm jealous because, you know, I went to Bethlehem eight bajillion years ago, and, you know, and I took a lot of awesome English and social studies classes, but I wish somebody had grabbed me and said, you need to do, you need to take some of these classes. And I wish that I was here now because I'm hearing what you're saying, and it's like, I understand some of it. You're using a lot of big words, and I smile when you say something I get, but, you know, I'm jealous because I want to, you know, learn these things, and I also am jealous because I know that when you go off to college in the real world, you are going to have such an advantage because you have these real-life skills that you can use in a profession. It's just, it's just phenomenal, and I would just encourage, you know, Mr. Domell and everyone else in the building to, you know, encourage students to take these classes, you know? English and social studies, science and math are phenomenal. Take those, yes, definitely, but, but, you know, enter that wing, enter that tech wing, enter. We had the business department here in April. I don't, try a business class, try these things because the life skills that you get, I'm just, I want to, I want to enroll in some of these in the fall. It just, it really is fascinating.
They're full.
Waitlist?
I just wanted to say, I attended the Elsmere Science Fair this year, and your robotics club was there. That was the first time I had seen that, and I recognized some of the students there. And every single kid in the science fair was so excited to go out and try these robots. I felt like I saw some engineers be born that night. They were there for the science fair, and obviously they were excited for their personal projects, but I think a whole new world was opened up to them when they saw that. Every kid was involved in it. And I think that we are probably going to be have to expanding that, our robotics team and offering it to younger kids as kids realize what we have here, so thank you.
I did have a question regarding your Build It program. How would different organizations, such as different PTAs, how would they contact you with an idea that they would like?
So at the moment, we have, we do have a district email. It's BCBuild-It@BethlehemSchools, and that's kind of how we're filtering our school emails separate from what people's requests are. So I, you can definitely send an email, any thoughts, any comments, anything that you might be looking at. We do our best to get back to you timely with, obviously, a quote of how much it would be to manufacture that product and a timeframe. So as long as people, the more flexible you are with a timeframe, the easier it is, so. Especially now with the end of the school year wrapping up and our students really shifting toward finals and studying, we do pick up a lot of that load, so it's not a problem. We don't mind, but if you're flexible with the timeframe, it does help.
We did talk, I think when you guys were at supervisors' meeting, maybe next year, about doing a presentation to President's Council. We thought that it could be overwhelming with the requests they might get, so.
We're hoping next year we do have a, we actually put a club request in. It's starting to be a group of students that are coming and hanging out and really engaged in it. So as that, as that grows, it'll obviously be easier to come up with these, these projects. So that's what we're hoping for.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, I do think that if the elementary schools knew more about it, you could be overwhelmed with requests.
See, but I see a collaboration now between the business program and the tech department and how to build this business, and I keep thinking about all of the things that you have to offer that, is the money going back to your program at least to be self-funding to buy new equipment?
It is. We're trying to sustain our equipment because obviously as you manufacture these things, it does take wear on the equipment. We're also hoping that we could expand our offerings to the district, so all of these, whatever profit there is on each of these items, which we're keeping at a
whatever profit there is on each of these items, which we're keeping at a minimum, is going to go back into the equipment offered to the build-in projects. So it's all, it's going to be self-sustaining as far as what we can offer and what we can maintain as far as our equipment goes.
Well, I want to thank you for such a detailed presentation, but also for putting it into layman's terms so that we could understand some of it. My son works for a do-it-yourself electronics company down in New York City, and until tonight, I understood about 1% of what he does, and now I'll understand 2%, so that's great.
That is great.
And I agree with Chris, I so wish I was back in school with all the options that are available now, so thank you for all you do for our students.
Of course, thank you for having us.
You know, Mike, with your free time now, you'll be able to do just that.
Can I audit? Thank you. Okay, next up, we have recognition of visitors on an agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Next up is finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through six.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just want to thank the donation made by the Bethlehem Theater Support Group. It's greatly appreciated. Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 16.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through two.
So moved.
Second.
Point of order?
Yes.
Like to isolate policy 2160, the school district officer and employee code of ethics, and policy 9120.1, the conflict of interest policy, to be dealt with separately.
Okay. All right, we'll take up the others. So we will be voting on all of the policies except for 2160 and 9120.1. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. So now we'll take up policies 2160 and 9120.1. Can I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I've isolated them again because I still am of the opinion that it is impossible to know what, based on the language and the policy, it's impossible to know what you're describing as a conflict of interest or perceived conflict of interest if you do not have a definition. Having said that, I've made similar arguments before, so at this point, that's all I'm going to say about it, except that this is very similar to the scandal that's going on with colleges and people messing with grades and getting, paying people to do things they shouldn't be doing. If we want to avoid that kind of publicity or other publicity that we haven't even thought about, or the kind of problems that we currently have by some of the appointments that we have made, I think we really need to have a policy that clearly delineates what we're talking about with a conflict of interest and a perceived conflict of interest. And again, without a definition, I am strongly against these two policies as written.
And I would concur with Jonathan's sentiments, and I just want to go over, I pulled just a random policy, the one I picked was from St. Lawrence University. Again, it's not a public high school, but it's a university, similar interests, and they clearly define what a conflict of interest is, which is, means any situation, circumstance, or state of affairs in which an individual is in a position to approve or influence policies or actions which involve personal interests or financial interests of the individual that may be inconsistent with the interests of the school or could ultimately harm or benefit financially, the individual, any member of his or her immediate family, any entity in which any individual described of this definition has 5% or greater ownership or benefit interests with respect to any such individual services. Also, the definition of financial interest means any instance in which a person has, directly or indirectly through business, investment, or immediate family, an actual or potential ownership or investment interest in the entity in which the school has or may reasonably be expected to have a transaction or arrangement, an actual or potential compensation arrangement with a school or with an entity or individual with which the school has or may reasonably be expected to have a transaction or arrangement. We clearly know there's an appearance of impropriety in some of our appointments. We choose as a board not to do anything about it, and I would not support this conflict of interest policy or code of ethics the way it is written.
Anyone else?
I would just like to say that I agree that conflict of interest is a very important thing to have a policy about. I think that the language that we have in this policy covers the situation we're talking about. We do have, you know, definitions within that policy, and I disagree with your assertion that we're not doing anything about it. I think this policy addresses the issue and gives our administration the flexibility they need to deal with conflicts of interest.
I would just like to address that, just saying that you can't address an appearance of impropriety, you can't handle it effectively. We can take action, but it's an appearance, and it cannot be addressed, and that language is not in the policy in the way it is currently written. And we've had conversation, which I think has been helpful, as to a mechanism to address certain situations, and it's not one in particular, there's several that we have that would apply to this, but it should be a policy where we're not appointing positions where it creates a conflict or an appearance of impropriety, and it does, and that policy does not address that in any way.
Anyone else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
I want to be clear, I'm voting, I am against the policy, but I am voting in favor of it for other purposes.
I'm in opposition of the policy.
Okay, that passes. Next, we will recognize visitors on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Future meetings and events, there will be a retirement reception for our retiring staff on Thursday, May 30th, at Norman Side Country Club. The next board meeting will be on June 5th, and that will be here.
Yes, but it will be in the cafeteria.
Okay. And we will start the meeting at 7:00. At 6:30, there will be a reception for our new-tenured teachers, and we anticipate the executive session for the board will start at 5:30. There's an audit committee meeting on June 10th at the Educational Services Center at 5:00 PM. Then there's a board meeting on June 19th, again, in the cafeteria at 7:00 PM with an anticipated executive session at 6:00 PM. There's a policy committee meeting Monday, June 24th at 6:00 PM in the Educational Services Center. And graduation is on Thursday, June 27th at 6:30 PM at the Times Union Center. Can I have a motion?
Mike, before you do, where is the audit committee meeting?
The Educational Services Center.
We'll put a room assignment when the agenda goes out. I think it's in the B conference room, but I'll verify.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have a motion for the board to go back into executive session to discuss a personnel matter?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'd like to announce that I am going to make a motion to reconsider the vote on the two policies that were passed separately. Thank you.
Okay, and we will not be taking any action in executive session, so there will be no need to go back into public session, so the public session is now ended. PIG students, come on up and sign out.